Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. The meeting is called to order at 4:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Student member Dizon. Dr. El Hessen.
Present.
Ms. Armstrong.
Present.
Mrs. Garza.
Present.
Ms. Stewart.
Present.
Mr. Critchfield.
Present. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed session agenda items. And at this time, the Board will adjourn to closed session and open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Good evening, everybody. We will now reconvene to open session at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk will provide an update on closed session topics.
The topics discussed in closed session were student matters, anticipated litigation, labor negotiations, public employee discipline dismissal release, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Replacement?
I'm sorry. The Board took action in closed session to approve student expulsion case 24-17-0004.
Thank you. Replacement pages for items 13.4 and 13.6 are on the back table. And tonight, we do not have... Tonight, we do not have requests addressing agenda, non-agenda items. And do we have any corrections on the agenda tonight?
We do not.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Somerset High School Principal, Mr. Higgins, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, everyone would please stand and face the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. At this time, Ms. Lisa Acevedo, assist us in some recognitions tonight.
Absolutely. I would like to ask the Board to come down in front of the dais while Mrs. Carter facilitates our recognitions for this evening.
This evening, the Board of Education is pleased to recognize teams from our district who earned the distinction of Gateway League and Mid-City League champions during their winter sports season. Student athletes and coaches, will you please come forward as I call your name and remain for a picture? Starting off with Bellflower Boys Wrestling Team, represented by Coach Adrian Avina and Senior Amar Khalil. The Board would like to recognize Amar Khalil, who won the CIF Southern Section Individual Wrestling Championship at 175-pound weight class. Amar is the first wrestler in 40 years to win a CIF wrestling title for Bellflower High School. Amar, do you have anyone in attendance that you'd like to recognize? Okay. Well, congratulations on behalf of the Board. Next, we'd like to recognize Bellflower Boys Soccer Team, represented by Bellflower High School Athletic Director Bryce Christensen. The Board would like to recognize the Boys Wrestling... I'm sorry, the Boys Soccer Team, who had a stellar season. The team went 7-2 and won to clinch the Mid-City's Soccer Championships. Here with us tonight are Mauricio Para, Joel Gavaya, and Max DeCassas. Okay, boys. Do you have anybody in the audience you'd like to recognize, gentlemen? No? Well, congratulations on behalf of the Board. Next, we'd like to recognize Mayfair Girls Wrestling Team, represented by Coach Ibatala, Juan Cosso, and Tony Niguén. Yes. The Board would like to recognize the Mayfair Girls Wrestling Team for winning the Gateway League title for the first time in the program's history. The following wrestlers were individual league champions at their respective class weight. Alyssa Prado, 100 pounds. Karin Ten Mendez, 115 pounds. Matilda Tellez, 120 pounds. And Laura Jeter, 190 pounds. The girls' team came in second in CIF individuals. Congratulations. Ladies, do you have anyone else you'd like to recognize in the audience? Oh, wonderful. Thank you. And congratulations on behalf of the Board. Nice job. Coaches, if you could remain, that would be great. Coaches, if you could remain, that would be great. We're going to do the Mayfair Boys Wrestling Team next. So our coaches have stayed with us, and we would like to recognize their team for winning the Gateway League title. The following individual wrestlers were individual league champions at their respective weight class. Isaiah Cruz, 106 pounds. Anthony Mora, 132 pounds. Leonardo Guerrero, 138 pounds. Elijah Rabelotto, 144 pounds. Jack Beard, 190 pounds. Kayden Carti, 215 pounds. Let's give all of our gentlemen a round of applause. As everyone is settling in for a picture, we'd like to say that the Boys Team was the Division One finalist in team duels, falling to champion Canyon Springs in their final match of the evening. The Boys are CIF champs, with a back-and-forth finish over Etawanda at the individual meets. And Kayden Carti, he is the CIF champion. Congratulations. Gentlemen, do you have anyone you'd like to recognize? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Wonderful. Congratulations. Okay, next, then, our final recognition. We'd like to recognize Mayfair Girls Basketball Team, represented by Coach Mike Slaughter. Tonight, our Girls Basketball Team that we have with us, Ryan Williams, Kennedy Demme, Nea Walker, Kylie Garcia, Jordan Smith, Nevia Manning, Mayumi Advancala, Chana Khan Parug. The Board would like to recognize the Mayfair Girls Basketball Team for winning the Mid-City League's title. They had an impressive league record of 9-1. Ladies, congratulations. Is there anyone you would like to recognize in the audience? Very nice. Thank you. Coach? Congratulations. And that concludes recognitions for this evening.
Congratulations again to everyone that was recognized tonight. Now, tonight, Mr. Higgins will be giving an inspirational message and sharing his highlights on this month's boardroom bulletin board. Mr. Higgins? Whenever you're ready, all you.
Yes. Before I begin my presentation, I have something for our Board members and Cabinet. I don't know if I'm able to walk through here, but maybe I'll come around this way.
Come on up. How do I look? You look good? Oh, you did it too? You should all do it.
If you need a different size, I can arrange that for you. So I didn't know what the sizes were, but anyway. But a good evening to President Critchfield, to our Board members, to Cabinet, and to all the guests in the audience. And so the theme for Somerset, for our Board this month is Somerset's Saints Gateway to Success. But first, let me give credit to our independent study teacher Veronica Avina. She did a fantastic job in designing and creating our Board for this month. And so I really want to recognize all of her hard work. And then, of course, our custodian, he had to come over to and assist with the ladder and everything. So I really want to appreciate their efforts in designing our Board. But anyway, we believe the gateway to success starts with our PBIS program. And with PBIS, that kind of sets your school culture. And so right in the middle of our Board, you'll see our school-wide behavioral matrix. And those matrix, in the middle, they're posted in all of our classrooms, okay? And teachers utilize them in their instruction because based... The Somerset Behavioral Matrix is based on our school-wide learner outcomes, which are communication, the four Cs, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity. But written within the matrix is our statement of purpose. And our statement of purpose is Somerset is a safe, welcoming, and nurturing environment that supports students on their journey towards self-fulfillment, scholarship, and success. And so, following our PBIS, we believe the gateway to success for our students is the support that they receive in our Wellness Center. Our Wellness Center is very... It's a thriving wellness center. And we have a counselor, Ms. Shannon Woods, who we also share with Los Flores. She provides that social emotional support that students need. And you'll see there's a picture of her there providing that one-on-one support for students. And then also, then another photo, you'll see that we had Coach Rudy, Keith Matheny, we call him Coach Rudy. He came to our school and provided a group session to our students. It was very engaging, and it just helps students to help regulate their emotions. They need to learn how to even regulate their emotions. And Coach Rudy, who is also the author of the School Connect curriculum that is utilized not only at Somerset, but at all the district schools, he's the author. And so we're able to secure his services to come to our school and provide this group counseling right in our Wellness Center. So that was fabulous. And so those are essential ingredients for gateway to success. Having a positive school culture and students knowing how to learn valuable coping skills so they can be successful in life. But then, you know Somerset High School, as you know, is a model continuation high school because of the number of programs that are at Somerset. And I must highlight just two of them. One has been around for a while though, and that's our CTE program. And with our CTE program, our students, they compete in Skills USA competition, and they do a remarkable job. And so we've highlighted a few students in the photo. One is Senior Mel Filmoto. He competed recently in a skills competition where he constructed a cabinet right there in the woodshop at Somerset High School. And so you see him there. And then you have... There's a gentleman, I just learned this the other day, I was so impressed with him. His name is Michael Valalta. The photo that you see there, this young man made a robot from scratch, okay? He built a robot right in, under Mr. Guzman's guidance, a robot from scratch. And he operated that machine, and you can see right there in class. And so I'm very impressed with the knowledge and the skill set of our students guided by our wonderful CTE teachers, Mr. Guzman and Mr. Amada. And then, lastly, a program that is new to Somerset High School is our garden program. Okay? We've established a garden at Somerset, and we have, through our garden program, a ranger program. And it's a comprehensive school garden system that cares for the garden and delivers engaging curriculum weekly. And some of the topics that our students are learning is about soil competition... composition, I should say, environmental stewardship, diversity, and various plant species, and even also healthy eating habits. Recently, there was the instructor from the Garden Ring in Rich, LA, came out, and they began cooking lessons out there, right there in the garden. So it was from the plants, fruits that they grow right there in the garden. So it was very, very wonderful. And that supports our L cap goal. And within our school plan, we said Somerset will expand, enhance, and enrich its curricular and co-curricular programs by providing newly learned opportunities to students. And so we are excited about the programs that are taking place at Somerset, and we believe that this is the gateway to success for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Now it's time for our student board reporters, representing Bellflower High School, Trista Peterson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trista Peterson. I am a senior at Bellflower High School, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak here today. I want to go over some previous events that we had at Bellflower, starting off with our No Hate Tour. We had some amazing BMX riders show off their cool tricks and share their relatable experiences regarding high school with different types of bullying and ways to deal with it. Continuing with our past events, we celebrated our Renaissance Week, including our Rally and Spirit Days. Our Renaissance Week is all about celebrating accomplishments of students and staff at Bellflower. We honored different kinds of awards, played games, and had cultural clubs, performances, and many other groups. With Renaissance being all about accomplishments from this past semester, we passed our honor roll certificates and lays for students who earned a GPA of 3.0 or higher. And this year, we are proud to say that we had 941 students in total that earned honor roll last semester. And on another high note, we announced our valedictorians and salutatorian. This year, we had three different valedictorians, and one of them being our student board member, Alyssa Dizon. Congratulations. And we are so proud of all three of them. And then another past event we had is our Read Across America. Some of our junior and senior leaders on campus participated, and they went to different elementary schools in the school district, and they read to some of the classrooms. And most of these students got to go be able to visit their old elementary schools and visit their old teachers and read to them as well. Next up, we have our upcoming events, starting with prom being around the corner, and our prom fashion show. Our prom date is set for April 27th and is located in Fullerton. For our prom fashion show, we opened up our annual prom boutique and allowed students to look through prom outfits for free. We like to showcase these in our prom fashion show by having some of our upperclassmen model our prom outfits. And we also have a students versus staff basketball game on March 27th during our high school lunch. We have our varsity players from boys and girls teams playing against our staff members. And last semester, we held a volleyball game with staff and students, and this was a really big, successful event. Last but not least, for our upcoming events, we have Spring Fest on March 14th, and this is our second Spring Fest at Bellflower. This will be on our Thursday minimum day, so the event will be from 1:30 through 4:30 PM. Similar to our Fall Fest, this event is open to the public and is free. We will have a DJ, you can purchase food, participate in games, crafts, and so much more. And then we have our social medias and ways to stay updated. Thank you all for your time, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Trista. Thank you so much. And representing Mayfair High School, Lennox Scott.
Good evening, President Critchfield, members of the Board, Superintendent Acevedo, district colleagues, and all in attendance. I wanted to extend my thanks for you guys allowing me to be here today to let you guys what's been going on this past month. Now, to start off, as you can see, we have a collage of pictures of our last night during our open house. Now, our open house was a chance for our students to peek into their future classes to see what's going to be going on next year. And I know President Critchfield, Ms. Garza, and Superintendent Acevedo got a peek in our anatomy class to get a demo of how students can dissect a cat. Sorry for those who have a cat. We also had all of our sports programs there so people can get info about our athletics program. Now, on this slide, it highlights our 17th Annual Hiram Chick Peterson Game, where our seniors and our teachers had a little fun and friendly basketball match. A reminder is that this event not only brings out the joy of people's competitive spirit -- the students won -- but it also allowed us to raise nearly $5,000 for senior scholarships. Here, we have our freeze-frame ladies and our semi-pro Saunders. If you couldn't tell, he's the head of our theater department. Continuing on, we have our Lunar New Year Celebration, where our Mandarin Club had the opportunity to create really educational posters and displays to really provide awareness on Asian culture. They displayed this in our... amphib... not, sorry, in our gym. Next, we have our Abilities Awareness Assembly. Now, if you can direct your attention to the bottom left, it reads, "The Ability Awareness Program aims to promote understanding, acceptance, and appreciation of individual learning and ability differences through fun, experiential activities." This assembly, if I had to put into words, was really just a fun and impactful event. It ranged from presentations by our unified students to dances, cheer routines, speeches by parents, and even a vocal performance, all to spread awareness. Moving on, we had our Black History Month presentation put on by our YBS, our Young Black Scholars Club. Now, similarly to Lunar New Year Celebration, our YBS club had the opportunity to create posters of people, places, colleges, and everything that really represented black culture. They presented to our students in our gym. Lastly, we had our Suburban Valley Conference, where 19 of our talented and athletic monsoons got to be recognized. On the right, we have one of our wrestlers that I believe were here today. And then on the left, we had our Athlete of the Year, Chice Gilbert. Thank you all so much for your attention. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Lennox. And representing Somerset High School, Julian Becerra, who is substituting for Sierra Ridgway. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Clinchfield, members of the Board, Internships Superintendent, Ms. Acevedo, sorry, members of the Cabinet, and all guests in my audience. My name is Julian Becerra, and it is a wonderful pleasure to be here, a great honor. I am a junior at Somerset. I'm starting off... Okay, starting off, every year, March is designated... March is designated Women's History Month. The month is set aside to honor women's contribution in American history. But did you know that Women's History Month started off as Women's History Week? That's right. Women's History Month began as local celebration in Santa Rosa, California. The education task local celebration in Santa Rosa, California, the education tax force of Simona County, California, commissions on the status of women planned to execute a Women's History Week celebration in 1978. The organizers selected the week of March 8th to correspond with the International Women's Day. The movement spread across the country as other countries imitated their own Women's History Week celebrations the following year. In 1980, a consortium of women's historians led by the National Women's History Project, now known as the National Women's History Alliance, successfully lobbied for national recognition. In February of 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th, 1980, as National Women's History Week. Seven years later, the US Congress passed the law authorizing the president to proclaim March as Women's History Month. It has been declared this way ever since. Also, sorry. Also, in recognition for Women's History Month, some Somerset women and soon-to-be women created this Women's History Month banner, highlighting the female symbols and... highlighting the female symbol and their very own handprints dipped in paint. This, without question, was a fun bonding activity for both our students and staff. Now, the NWEA MAP Growth Test was administered this week. This was the This was the spring administration and similar to all, to the fall test. Data will be analyzed to determine students' performance, growth, and skill that need developing in math, reading, and language. The data also provides teachers with accurate evidence to help inform instructional strategies and improve, and improve learning. Congratulations to Somerset, to Somerset Junior Anthony Lorenza. Anthony competed in a speech, in a speech contest sponsored by Alliance International, and he won first place. Anthony, who was supported by English teacher Elizabeth England and wood and graphic production teacher Brian Omata, delivered a stunning speech on the question, "What would you do if you could change the world?" For winning first place, Anthony earned a $100 scholarship. Great job, Anthony. You're the man. For upcoming events, the start of Block 7 at Somerset is March 18th. Somerset Annual Career Fair is scheduled for March 21st. From March 25th to March 29th is Spring Intercession. Following intercession, students will be, will be on spring break from April 1st to April 8th. At the last block of the year, Block 8 begins on May 6th, and our spring awards is on May 8th. This concludes my report this evening. Again, my name is Julian Becerra, and have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.
Great job, Julian. All, all three of you, very well done, as always. And you know the spiel. You're free to leave, but if you want to hang out, you're more than welcome to, but anytime. Now, it's going to be time for BTA, CSEA, and PTA Communications. CSEA does not have a report tonight, but we have BTA President Carrie McDaniel. Please come forward.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Azaveto, Board President Critchfield, Members of the Board, Members of Cabinet, and guests. It was nice to see, nice to see some of you at the fair at Mayfair last night. The rain made things a little challenging, but it was still a great night for our community. I would like to start out by saying that there are many things moving in the right direction. The Board and Cabinet are responding to emails, providing information and clarification when requested. I'm meeting regularly with Mrs. Azaveto, Mrs. Hogan, Mrs. Stanley, and even having regular conversations with Board members. But what I would like to talk about tonight is what teachers are struggling with. Dr. Drahti introduced the lead-from-the-middle concept, and while in theory it sounds great, leading from the middle still needs guidance and protocols from the top. Many of our teachers liked the idea of leading from the middle, but we as a district weren't really, weren't ready for that big idea. And now, there's a big question hanging around. Are we continuing with the light lead-from-the-middle concept? Are we going to support those principals who are struggling with this concept? Are we just going to wait and see what happens? The buyback days are a great idea, and there is so much potential for them to be successful if our sites work together to determine what they need to move forward. But again, if the leadership on the site doesn't value teacher input, what will those days look like? And will teachers want to attend if those days aren't meaningful enough for them? The Professional Development Survey was a little overwhelming. I truly believe as a district, we should try to narrow down to two or three things we all want teachers to know and be good at instead of throwing 20 different things out there. We should work together to create a plan that gets us all on the same page and evaluate if those things are working or not. And if they are not, then try something else. BTA, CSEA, the Superintendent and Board brought back the Alliance meetings. We were working on safety and behavior concerns. BTA shared survey from our, shared, shared survey data from our teachers. Mrs. Williams took the data and created slides to show the concerns clearly and share them with the Superintendent. Behavior is a problem across the district, across the country, really. But I get emails regularly about behavior issues and asking what to do. We used to have discipline matrices where the behaviors and consequences were clearly noted. And while we know and acknowledge that ed code has changed, where is the discussion on what can we do versus what we're told we can't do? I'm not a special education teacher, and as BTA President, I'm learning a lot about it. I keep hearing from teachers all over the district that special education is a little messy. I had a teacher from our Standing Committee come and talk to Mrs. Hogan and Mrs. Stanley about the reminder of, the remainder of the topics since Mrs. Young is no longer here. Teachers were told to send communications to the program administrator, and if they didn't respond in a timely manner to CC Miss Young, and she would take care of it. Now that there's no Miss Young, teachers are emailing site admin and the PAs with concerns, hoping to get an answer in a timely manner. Please make special education a priority to fix and as soon as possible. So I come here tonight because these are just some of the conversations I keep having, but we need guidance and movement from the top. I hope that as I continue to meet with Mrs. Azaveto, Mrs. Hogan, Mrs. Stanley, and even have conversations with Board members and other district employees, that we can start tackling these concerns that affect us in order to keep moving forward. Before I end tonight, I'd like to read a letter to you from a Washington teacher. I have a whole bunch more for you in here, but this was the one they chose for me to read to you tonight. "To the Board and Lisa Azaveto, Mr. Sanchez has been our AP since mid-last year and opened our school year. He has been approachable, dependable, efficient, and communicates in a timely manner. Our staff has been longing for a refreshing leader the past three years. When he began, morale, morale went up with teachers, and we finally felt like we were being heard, seen as educators, and able to collaborate for student success. Seeing him greet families, teachers, students was great to see. Again, this has been missing the last three years. Being present in front of staff and children is a big part of leading. We can honestly say that we feel like he wanted to make a difference in Washington and create plans and goals. Again, this has been missing the last three years. He has been let go by our principal. I am aware that there are many things behind the scenes. However, my experience has been nothing but positive. If I felt I needed to support with a student, families, or in my classroom, I knew I had to email Mr. Sanchez or ask my questions and concerns would take days and weeks for a response for, I'm working on it." Opening a school year, opening a school year is stressful. As a staff, the last three years, we would ask ourselves, could this year be more organized? Most importantly, would our leadership have a plan and follow-up? The year started strong. Why? Because Mr. Sanchez was in charge of the beginning year prep and organization. If we had a question the first month of school, we were told by our principal, ask Mr. Sanchez. We did, and it was the most organized it had been. Not only was it efficient, we felt heard and appreciated. Our duel was in transition, but that was a constant response as to why Mr. Sanchez was leading many tasks. Therefore, from that point on, I knew if I needed something to be done or support with Mr. Sanchez was the one I felt I could go to or email. In the fall, I believe we had a questionnaire sent to our staff from our principal regarding how leadership is going. When I read leadership, I assumed both school leaders. I answered honestly, but listed principal and AP comments. Our principal shared, she reviewed it in January and shared she would do better. Was this questionnaire shared with Mr. Sanchez? No. Why? If the principal felt it is important to work as a team, she should have included him. I encourage you to ask for the questionnaire response, and you will see the trend. And it is not about Mr. Sanchez. I urge you to come and support Washington. We urgently need a positive and focused leader. It is a huge loss for our Washington community. Please look into our site leadership with careful, with a careful lens. In closing, I would like to see the Board, if possible, be more present at our school. We need leadership support. Thank you for listening, a frustrated and disappointed teacher. So thank you for your time this evening, and have a great night.
Thank you, Carrie. Ms. Azaveto, I'm sure you're already on top of it, but there's a list of things in there. Could you start a response to some of those for the Board?
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Thank you. PTA President, Ms. Linda Morgan, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Critchfield, Board Members, interim Superintendent Lisa Azaveto, staff and community members, or whoever's left. Staff to recognition just seemed like it cleared. For tonight's report, I just have a few pictures that I received from our PTAs to share with you. And so, I was going to say, yeah, thank you. So February was Black History Month and obviously Valentine's Day, so a lot of love was shared. Our PTAs held various Valentine's events, whether it's craft, dances, candy grams. So yeah, a lot of fun to be had, and our PTAs were very busy. Other events on the next page, you'll see on the right, sorry, is Lindstrom Elementary that held a math festival. It was for TK through 6th grade that participated. They explored geometry at 12 different themed tables. I just realized now that the pictures are kind of small, but it was a cool collage, sorry. And on your left was Woodruff Elementary, who celebrated on March 1st National Women's Month. So they had an assembly with four amazing women guest speakers. And that was an assembly for the entire school as well, so all the kids were crammed in. For me, that was really fun to see all the kids, too. I don't have any little ones anymore. My kids all graduated out of the district. So whenever I get to visit a site, it's a lot of fun. Next slide, please. Okay, oh, did I miss one? Never mind. So I just wanted to thank the Board for attending our Council PTA Reflections Art Program Awards Night. This is where, for those that don't know, our students at all our sites submit artwork that gets judged, and the winners get celebrated. They got a medal and a certificate. We had a full house, which was awesome, a little bit of technical difficulties. But it was fun nonetheless, and it was great to see the students, very artistic. So thank you, Brad, Amy, and Myra for joining us, and Ms. Azaveto as well. Thank you. Next slide. Some upcoming events, some of our schools are still celebrating, what is it, Read Across America? I'm sorry, I blanked out there. So they're doing it a whole week. They have dress-up days and activities for the students, book swap at several of the sites. Woodruff is having an event on March 14th called Family Stories. And Woodruff is actually one of the units where they send out a newsletter monthly to all their members to keep them up to date of everything that's going on at the school sites. So last slide, in case you want to stay up to date or join some of our PTAs and get the newsletter, one last pitch to join, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Linda. It is now time for Superintendent Report.
Good evening. Thank you. I have had the pleasure of visiting all of our sites over the past two weeks, and I'd like to thank all of our teachers and students for the warm welcome into the classrooms. I have spent a lot of my time, the last seven years, at the secondary sites. So it's, it's fun to go back and visit at the elementary sites again. Over the past couple of weeks, I've enjoyed meeting with the CSEA President, Michelle Cuellar, the BTA President, Carrie McDaniel, the Bellflower Council PTA President, Linda Morgan. And I'd like to thank Linda for the additional work that she and her PTA presidents did the other night for hosting the Reflections Awards. So thank you so much for doing that for our students. I had a lot of fun attending the Chick-Petersen Basketball Game, which Lennox mentioned earlier this evening. It was really fun. Mrs. Garza and I got to see the teachers all dressed up in their different themes. Unfortunately, the funny costumes didn't help with the round ball because the students won with a score of 46 to 34. But Mr. Peterson was an assistant principal when I was a teacher at Mayfair, and I actually taught his son Ryan math and science, so I brought back some really fond memories of that time. So we have a lot going on in Bellflower Unified, as we all know, and I'm proud to be part of it. I thank all of you again for being here to support our students and our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. And I'm going to kick it right back to you for our discussion item.
Yes, sir. We have one discussion item this evening on the Second Interim Financial Statements. So Mr. George Martinez, the Director of Fiscal Services, will provide you with the presentation to support item 13.19. Mrs. Hogan will begin the discussion with Mr. Martinez, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Hogan.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. So tonight, we have Director of Fiscal Services, as Ms. Azaveto said, Mr. George Martinez, to present the Second Interim Financial Information for the District. As part of our consent agenda, we will be asking the Board to approve the report that will be submitted to the county as part of our AB 1200 fiscal monitoring process to monitor the fiscal conditions of the district. It is also a way of keeping the Board informed of the big picture fiscal condition of the district and provide fiscal information that will help guide decisions for the future to protect the fiscal solvency of the district. If you recall, at the last Board meeting, Dr. Reyes provided you a mid-year update regarding expenditures to the specific actions and goals of the approved ALCAP. Tonight, Mr. Martinez will provide updates regarding year-to-date revenue and expenditure information based on district-wide expenditures according to services obtained. So we have provided you with a one-page summary of examples of budgeted expenditures along with the Second Interim Report. There for each of you to use those objects to help frame a point of reference to the expenditures. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, President Critchfield, fellow Board members, Superintendent Azaveto, Cabinet members, and the community. Tonight, I'm here to present the Board with the Second Interim Financials for the 2324 fiscal year. The Second Interim, sorry, give me one, there it goes. The Second Interim will provide the Board with projected end-of-year data as well as actuals through January 31st of 2024. This allows the district to see where we stand with the actuals through January 31st, 2024, and where we believe to be headed through June 30th of that same fiscal year. The Second Interim is required due to an ed code, ed code 42130, and is used as an early detection system for financial stability for any district. The report provides financial data starting July 1st of 2023 through whatever interim period we're at. In this case, it is Second Interim, which leads to January 31st of 2024. And it does also provide some data for out-years and our multi-years and things of that nature, which we'll get to. This report does require Board's approval and certification based on the information we provide you here tonight. The Second Interim provides information for both restricted and unrestricted funds, funding, and then we can see a combination of both, which we'll get through in the next couple of slides. In this first slide, you can see that at July 1st, our Board operating approved budget on the revenue side was $213,580,792. As of January 31st, that changed a bit. It became $213,821,402, which you can see highlighted in yellow. On the other side, on the expense side, we began with a budget of $265,88702, which is near the middle. And as of January 31st, that went down to $248,818,292. That reduction was done by our budget team to more closely align to our true expenditures, which you can see in the circled areas. On the revenue side, we've collected $124 million. And on the expense side, we've spent $106 million right below that. So we've brought down our budget on the expense side to more closely track with our true expenditures through that point in time. Our projection does still show that we are anticipating a deficit spending at the end of this year of about $35 million. But comparing it to what was said in July 1st, that has dropped significantly, but we are still anticipating that. If you do look at our actuals, we do have more revenue than expenses at this point in time, so it doesn't show that because all expenses have not yet happened. This slide here is a more detailed breakdown of our, just our revenue, how we receive it, how it's budgeted. And as you can see here, we have four major sources of revenue. We have the Local Control Funding Formula, which we use as LCFF, just the acronym. We also have federal revenue, we have other state revenue, and other local revenue. Here at Bellflower Unified, our biggest source of revenue is LCFF, and that is funded based on your average daily attendance, which is known as your ADA. That is where, that is our budgeted side. And in the middle, on the third column, you can see our actuals through January 31st, which ties to the last slide. We received $124 million as of now, almost $125, and that is 58% of our anticipated revenue. So through January 31st, we received close to 60% of the revenue for the entire year. The next slide we'll get to is similar, but it is on the expense side. It's the same concept. We have multiple layers of how we do, what we spend on in our expenditures. And you can see here at a quick glance that our biggest pool of expenditures are salaries and benefits. They are our largest portion of expenditures for us currently and most districts as well. And you can see that through January 31st of 2024, we've spent close to $106 million, which at this point in time is about 43% of our total expenditures. Less than our revenue that we've received percentage-wise, but a large number and Less than our revenue that we've received percentage-wise, but a large number in expenditures comparatively. The next slide we're going to get to is just a summary of both of these together. There it goes, perfect. So this slide mirrors the previous two slides that we just went through. But this is combined, and at the bottom, you can see our fund balances, how they sit, where we anticipate them ending. So the first column is your operating budget, which was previous. The middle column is your actuals, where we are tracking as through January 31st of 2024. And the final is what we're asking to be approved, which is the projected year totals showing that smaller deficit. That is the biggest point here, that we anticipated $51 million in deficit at the beginning of the year. And at January 31st, we are now saying, hey, that went down, but we are still anticipating about $35 million at the end of the year. This slide will reference our ending fund balance, which is a big component that everyone looks at. We have four major areas that affect our fund balance. The first is our non-spendable, which includes items such as your prepaid expenses, our store's inventory. The second is our restricted, which as it states, is restricted funding. Some of the funding in that is COVID money, some of it is title programs, some of it is IDEA for special needs students. The third in that is our committed funding. That is funding that the board guides us on, you guys commit it for us, and then we set it aside based on whatever decisions are made by the board. And the last is the unassigned, that is what is left over. In our projected year totals, the highlighted in yellow, you can see that currently we have $45 million unassigned. That does seem like a large number, but please note that at the time of adoption, when commitments are required, the board did commit $54 million. 23, there's delayed facilities repairs, supplemental concentration. So we don't have to list it at this point in time. This is just a reminder that that $45 million is not really free money because you guys have previously made commitments that have not been changed as of yet. And to break down our committed, please note that on this slide, you can see that there's $26.7 million. And the next slide will change and come up soon. Thank, that's one too many, maybe mine worked at the same time. You guys should have it in your presentation, there is a slide that is a three-column slide. It shows that there are $19 million on that slide. The point of that slide is to show you guys that we have three programs that are one-time, and there are $19 million out of that $26 million that belong to those three programs. That is just to show that a large portion of what is restricted is one-time in nature, and it belongs to just these three programs, the Arts and Music Block Grant, the Educator Effectiveness, and the Learning Recovery. So those will expire at some point, and the money will never come back to us unless something else takes over that place. The next slide that we'll go through is the one, this one here. So this is the Special Funds Ending Balance. This, our general fund is our main operating fund, but we are also required to monitor and follow through with any other fund that the district oversees. These are all of those funds, they include the ASP Fund, our Special Education SELPA, Child Development, things of that sort. And the purpose of that is to monitor their fiscal stability, but also be aware of any concerns that may affect our general fund. An example of this, as you guys are well aware, is our Fund 21. That is our bond fund, that is where the steam building is paid out of. That is something that we monitor because we do believe, and we all know that you are aware, that there are still pending payments to complete that. So we monitor this to just kind of track and make sure we have enough in our general fund to cover all of our commitments. This is our multi-year that I mentioned earlier, where the second interim discusses out-years as well. There's a lot of data on here. This is based on our current known revenue and expenditure information. This year, we also included for you guys an additional column with our 2223 unaudited actuals to help provide a better understanding of the trends of what we actually spent in previous year, where we're at today, and what the future holds for us, so that you can see a big picture of how fluid our budget actually is. You can see that last year in 2223, the first column, our revenues did exceed our expenditures. So that means we actually took in a little more than we sent out, which helped increase our fund balance and grow that. The problem with that being that in the out-years, we don't have that COVID money anymore. It's going to expire, so we won't have that one-time influx of funds. So when you start tracking our future years, you can see that that revenue drops drastically, but the expenses do not. We have to maintain those expenses. So we maintain certain things such as salary step-in columns, any increases. We do our best to reduce where we believe there could be reductions. But we want you to note on here that at some point, this may become an issue. We've tried to do our best reductions in supplies, services, purchases of larger items. The only area that would be left would be our salaries. This slide here is just to give you guys a quick glance at some of the bigger factors that we have that affect our budget. The first one is our COLA. The big note there for you guys is that in this year and the upcoming years, our COLAs are very small, they're very minimal. So to compare that to what we received previously of 8.22%, it is much smaller. Currently, we're at .76%. It is not getting any bigger. That leads to my next point, where it's, for example, in our CALPERS, which is for our classified staff, their retirement, the rate of paid, what we have to contribute on the employer side is going up every year at the rate of COLA or more. So those costs will be absorbed by the district, although we are not receiving much more funding to cover those costs. And the last one is just for you to note, since we have discussed how ADA affects our funding. This is our current year revenue that we're projecting. Our ADA count is in the parentheses. So for example, in 2324, our average daily attendance is projected to be a little over 9,900 students. And we will receive about $146 million for that. And that is the projected trend going forward for our general LCFF funding. This, one of the final slides here is just to give you guys an update on our one-time COVID funding, the grants that we have available, what's remaining, what our total entitlement left is, how much we've spent, and the available balance. Some of these are set to expire soon in this calendar year. We are doing our best to monitor them, make sure that they are expended on the right object codes and items that we need. And we will be monitoring that until the day they expire, so that we do the best we can with those funds. As mentioned before, maintaining the committed funds and that ending fund balance is very important due to the fact that in this funding, we do have contracts, we do have things that will have to roll out into somewhere else. We want you to note that, that there are contract services, things of that nature, that may need to be covered by a different funding source once this expires. So that fund balance that you guys have helped us build will probably be used for some of these items, as long as the board is good with that. And the last slide we'll put up is just our next steps, so you are aware of where we are headed. This is just a quick timeline for you guys to review and see what my next steps with my budget team are. With that being said, as a reminder, everything in our budget side has specific timelines. We do need to monitor those. But we want you to be aware that we do also monitor internally on a daily basis to make sure that if we do see any upcoming concerns or anything of that nature, we try to, you know, take it head-on and fix it before it gets to a point that it could create a problem for you guys. With that, that is all, thank you guys.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I will now open it up to questions from my board colleagues. No questions? Dr. Sue.
Thank you for all your hard work and planning and allocating. I wanted to ask, so when you go back to the COVID-19 grants, so you said there's going to be some funds that we're going to have to pick up as the funding's going to run out. But then are you going to list out, are those entitled funds? Or restricted funds, or are those funds going to be able to, we can reexamine as a board whether or not they're still needed?
So that is part of the plan. As cabinet does discuss internally already, what they are going to be looking at, what those contracts are, those services, the additional things that we've done. And they are going to determine internally and bring that back. And then we will see where we can funnel it, will that be supplemental and concentration funding? Is that our general fund? But that is part of the process of us letting them know, these are here. Are we continuing this in the future, or are we ending this once this ends?
So the timeline you have here is September 30th, 2024. So when are you going to be bringing it to the board for us to look at prior to that?
That will be a discussion, I believe, that we are already having at the cabinet level. And as it gets closer, then we will assess and address which ones are relevant to continue or not. And that will be brought, I believe, by either Sulema or Bonnie at some point.
Okay, and just one more question. In regards to some of the deficit funding that you've identified, how much of that can we tap into our reserves?
By default, any deficit spending that we encumber will automatically come out of your fund balance. So that's why we need to monitor that. We've committed some money with the board's guidance, but first, that will happen. If we do end up deficit spending, we reduce that out, and we will bring that back to the board and say we can no longer commit it to delayed facilities repair because we had to use it for these costs. And then we will have to readdress the commitments at that point.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Dr. I'm going to go around the table one time, then I'll come back. Ms. Garza.
Thank you, poor President Critchfield. I have a question to staff. I know that I had actually requested several times that we be included in the creation of this budget because we oversee that budget. So I'm wondering, do we have a set date for a study session for us to be able to look at this in depth and make some of those decisions that we are very much responsible for?
Mr. Critchfield and I were just looking at your calendar for the remainder of the year, and that's one of the items that we'll be looking at, actually scheduling a date for that, that's one of the topics.
Thank you, I really look forward to doing that because, again, this is something that we directly oversee. So we should be directly able to see exactly where everything's going and where the board wants us to allocate those funds.
And just to clarify on that, Ms. Garza, this is the second interim reporting. So this is based on the proposed approved budget that you guys approved at the beginning in June, and this is part of the monitoring. So all of the allocations are based on that proposed budget that you guys approved in June.
You're correct, thank you for reminding us of that. But you're also correct in saying that we approved it.
Correct.
We were not necessarily part of creating it so much. We were given suggestions, recommendations, but we really would like to see more in-depth numbers and given options instead of recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Ms. Stewart.
I would like to know why we didn't have this presentation before tonight.
Ms. Azaveto was sharing that information with me. It was on the agenda, posted as part of the agenda, I believe, but they're clarifying with me that it wasn't. So we will definitely look into that.
Yeah, because I don't understand how we can have a conversation when we tell you guys all the time that we don't understand these budgets, we want to understand them more, we need more information. And this is the first time we're seeing this.
It is part of the second interim, which is part of your agenda. This is just a summarized version of all of the information of the second interim.
It's a second interim, correct? So this is the second time, and there's different numbers. So is this the same exact presentation that we saw in the first interim?
No.
So it's new, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, and we should have this before we get here on the dais.
So I will say, we are working on the macro calendar to have a study session just on this, so we are working on that. So we will definitely update the rest of the board when that happens. I think it's very much needed, and I think it'd be very much appreciated as well. Any other questions from the board?
I have several, but do you want to go back to Dr. Sue first, please?
Go for it.
I'll just ask one quick question first, and then we could circle back. But if the board does choose to have a longer, more in-depth study session about this budget, would the student board members be allowed to be there? Could we also be a part of it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Dr. Sue.
I just had one question in regards to the reserve. I don't see it here. Where are we, am I missing it?
It'll be on Slide 6 of the PowerPoint, it'll be on the bottom. Let me track back to that. One too many, one too many. So this one here, that one there, it should be colored in color for you guys, the green, where it says ending fund balance. The one on the first column is what we anticipated at the time of board-approved budget, which was in July. So we were anticipating a deficit of $51 million, which you can see in the deficiency. Our beginning fund balance was a little over $130 million. So based on that, we were going to end with about $79 million. With the updates and us bringing down our spending and things of that sort, now our deficit spending is about $35 million, anticipated at June 30th, which now will bring us down to about $95 million in the ending fund balance. That would lead to the next slide of those four portions and where they fall into. There's, once again, non-spendable money, that's the warehouse inventory that we have paper for the schools and things of that sort, any prepaid items for next year. Then there's the restricted funds, which we can only set aside for those programs. Then there's the committed funds that the board has guided us on. And then there is your unassigned money that is, that is kind of your free cash.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Ms. Stewart.
On the expenditure summary, the projected totals versus actuals to date. Again, we always talk about books and supplies. And I see that our operating budget was $27 million, our projected was $17 million, and we've only spent $4 million. Is there something coming at the end, obviously, there's $13 million coming at the end. Can you tell me why those haven't been spent yet and what those plans are to spend those on?
So those books and supplies include other items, right? There are also, that is a very generic title, but there are other items that get spent there. There's classroom items, there's office items, the stuff you need for your secretary's pens, paper, pencil, that are not necessarily that. We budget based on what the needs of the school sites tell us they are. So if they tell us we want $10,000 for pencils and paper, we will budget that.
Absolutely.
At the end of the year, if they only spent $500, because that's all they needed, it creates this big gap.
I get that, but if we did $10,000 for pencils and pens, wouldn't they want them at the beginning of the year and not at the end?
Not necessarily, for example, books and stuff, we do get a big influx at the beginning, the paper, right, things like that. They'll order them right up front, you get 50 cases, and you may not run through the 50 cases until February. So your school site will not order again until March or April. We get a big influx of orders right at the beginning and right before school closes, when they see how much funding is left over for them to use.
So again, do you have on that $13 million, any specific items that we would be spending on?
It'll be any supplies to close out the year so that they can start the new school year ready and good to go. You know, books, paper, pens, highlighters for the kids, crayons, notepads, things like that. They will order all of that at the end of this school year to be ready to go for summer school, things like that, closer to the end.
Can I ask, just going to piggyback on that. So are there, for these categories, is there like a write-up to like what these categories have to be?
Correct, so there's a sheet that you guys should have received in orange color. That one has a breakdown of what each object code means. On here, you won't see it, but because we don't differentiate by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. But for example, books and supplies fall under the XXX category. So that's anything that could fall under that category.
Can you, what's, I should probably know this, non-capitalized equipment.
So non-capitalized equipment is any item that you can purchase that is under $500, $5,000, sorry.
So anything under $5,000?
Correct.
That's pretty broad, right?
So any laptops, computers, the PCs we buy for staff, things like that, under $5,000, furniture.
Anything under $5,000 that still meets the other criteria?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Stewart.
On the slide that is not up here, but we have, you have that, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So the restricted one-time funds, can you just tell me, what are educator effectiveness, what are these used for?
So these are grants, I believe Bonnie's overseeing, so she will give you a better detailed explanation of that. So I'll hand that one over to her.
Thank you.
Educator effectiveness covers professional development.
Okay, thank you. And then I know on the next, the multi-year projection, you said at some point, this may become an issue, spending so much. What are our plans to fix it?
That is discussions amongst cabinet and guidance from you guys. And part of that study session will lead to, I hope, better help amongst all of us to get to a point where we don't feel this.
So these discussions should be taking place with the board as well?
That is part of this, this is why we bring this to you at this point in time, so that you see and we kind of front-load you with, I see this may become a problem at some point.
So then our primary plan would be to discuss this in the study session? Okay. Sorry, let me just see. And then on the very last page, forgive me, planning assumptions, impacts to monitor. On the bottom where it says funded ADA, it goes from $146 million to $140, back up to $142 with less students. Why is that?
So part of funding for LCFF, they give you a grade span adjustment every year. So that is also based on the top numbers, where it's the COLA. So we get a little bit more money every year due to COLA. So if we got $1,000, but COLA's 2%, we'll get another $20 the next year. So even if you lose students, the amount you get per student may go up a little bit. So the loss of students isn't felt as drastically because we receive a little more per student.
So because up at top on that, the 2024, because it's .76, it would only be... So because up at top on that, the 2024, because it's .76, it would only be that? And then the other one is 2.73, so that's the difference?
Yes, so that'll go up. So it just depends on how many students we lose comparatively to how much more we're gaining.
Got it. And then on the last one, the COVID-19 grants update, I know you guys said that you will monitor these until they expire. Can we get updated on this as well?
We can definitely.
When they're getting closer to expire, what we're spending those on, and just kind of maybe in our memos? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Now, I remind my board colleagues, if you wanna ask a question, just push the button whenever you're ready. Seeing none, I'll ask my question. So on the general fund component of ending fund balance sheet, you, maybe help me explain, there's a part where you said, don't forget you committed the money for the delayed facility repairs. So that's why, so it's not reflected over here, but in the unassigned, unappropriated. But if it is, help me with that, cuz we, we assigned.
So at the time of board adoption, it is a requirement by the state to assign it. We present it to you, we give you the numbers, and we show it to you, and you guys either yay or nay it, and then we work with you on that. At second interim, first interim, the state does not require it. If it did, it would be more work. We would have to give you guys a paperwork, and you guys would have to do it. So we can leave it out and exclude it until the next board adoption, which is coming up again this year for the 24, 25 year. So we leave it out, but it's just a reminder to say, hey, there is that money. But at the beginning of the year, the board told us this is what we wanna use it for. So it's not really free cash right now.
I'm just curious, like, if we already assigned it, I know they don't make us do it, but like, why wouldn't you just put it there as it's assigned?
If you look at your multi-year projection, it would create an issue for our third year.
Okay, actually, that was my next question. Perfect segue. So when we did our five-year stabilization plan, there was, there was a little bit more red on the paper. I know these are all living documents and they change, but how does this compare to the five-year stabilization plan that we all looked at last?
If you compare that to our five-year, we are doing, we are in a much better position. For example, in 22, 23, we, in our five-year plan, we were projected to end in the red. We actually ended in the black. So if you compare it now, we're in a different, a tier because of that, because we did end up making a little bit.
I mean, that's great news, but why? Cuz when we did that five-year plan, it looked like we were headed down a much different path, and now we're...
Similar concept to what I was explaining earlier, which is, we budget conservatively. So we budget thinking you're going to spend every dollar you're given. But at the end of the year, if it doesn't happen, that is where those differences come about. Either we received more money and you didn't spend the $248 we budgeted. But if you did, that is what we want the board to be aware of, that that could be the maximum, that you're allowed to spend at this point in time.
So this year, we're expected to be deficit spending, I have it here.
Correct. We're expected to be deficit spending about 35. That's what a budget of $248 million. But we've only spent about $105 million in total.
Okay, so, projected-wise, you knowing, are we really gonna be in deficit $35 million?
If I were a gambling man, I would say no.
Okay, okay.
So when, I'm sorry, Mr. Cretchfield. So when you look at our combined budget summary there with the board-approved operating budget, as Mr. Martinez was saying, originally, it was actually higher, right?
I'm sorry, which page, I'm sorry?
That's the combined budget summary?
It would be Slide 5, I believe, to... Uh, Slide 6.
The combined budget summary.
Oh, got it. Other way, other way. One more, that one there.
So when you look at it here, and with the board-operating approved budget, you will see there that at that time, it was projected to be the $51 million. We've already adjusted it based on the trends that we're seeing that are actually happening. Your, as it was pointed out earlier, books and supplies is one that you're not seeing most of that coming to fruition. However, on some of the other areas, you are seeing that the budget, the spending is pretty much aligning where it is. So it has been reduced to the 34, and that's what happens in terms, as you're changing that, then your ending fund balance will also change, which will impact the years that are coming forward.
Got it. So last, last year when we did this, was there a change in the second interim closer to what it really was? But then, we actually ended up in the black?
Yeah, there's, so we're always constantly monitoring and depending on what is happening that year to trend, then those changes are being made. As we're seeing more of those connected trends based on one-time money going away, we're making those adjustments. We'd have to look exactly at that document in terms of how much adjustment was made on that.
Okay, so you'd say it is gonna be closer to that 35, so we gotta wager going, cuz you're gambling.
So you go back to, and if we go back to our unaudited actuals, cuz that actually tells you what we ended the previous year with. So go to unaudited actuals, we actually spent $195, if I recall correctly. So look at the multi-year projections, which, go forward.
We spent $195, 500 in 22, 23 total for the year.
And that's why we include this now. This is actually not part of your second interim reporting, but we include the unaudited actuals so that we're actually seeing what the trends are. So at the end of last year, when you're looking at each of the object codes there, you can see that in books and supplies, we did end up spending $10 million, a little over $10 million. In salaries, we ended up spending $73 million. So you start using those trends and based on step and column, inflation and all the different things, you project outwards. And that's why, as Mr. Martinez was saying earlier, we have reduced in the out-years. But based on the trends, if you look at 25, 26, in books and supplies, what we have budgeted there, which is a little close to $10 million, but you look at what's spent last year, that's actually less than what was spent last year. So the question becomes, is that really realistic? And looking at that, that's why these trends are very important, and the unaudited actuals information helps to guide the upcoming years. You look at your total revenue in terms, and that's decreasing in the years. So that's where you start to match that information.
The key factor there is, let's say, we even maintained $195 and didn't expend anymore. In 24, 25, I am slated to only receive $180 million for Bellflower. If I spent $195 and only received $180, that immediately is an impact to Bellflower.
Thank you. Ms. Garza?
Thank you, President Cretchfield. Looking at the actual report for the second interim, page 222, can you explain to me, it's a standard not met. Projected ratio of unrestricted salary and benefit cost to total unrestricted expenditures has changed by more than the standard at any of the current year or two subsequent fiscal years. We need to provide a reason why this change exceeded the standard and the description of methods and assumptions used in projecting salaries and benefits. Our explanation is a one-time funds and carryovers. Can you explain that to me exactly in layman's terms, so I can understand it?
So as you're well aware, we, we've discussed like the COVID funding, the one-time funds that we get from there. The sites also do have carryover that they keep year over year, that they can use on whatever items they have. That usually, those two items usually do not get budgeted in salaries. They get budgeted in supplies, services, equipment, things of that sort. That criterion standard, what it is telling you is you have to spend a certain number on salaries by the end of the year. The way our system is budgeted, it shows that we will not meet that because we have so much in that one-time funding in those other categories, services, books, supplies, things of that. But when we get closer to the end of the year, and those carryovers are not spent, and they roll into the next year, we then show our true expenditures, and that is where you will see that we meet that criteria. If you look at the other slide where our actuals are, we are in that range already. We are spending about 85% just on salaries. And our range is 80 to 88%. If I'm correct, I could double-check, cuz I know it's on that sheet. I don't have that one in front of me. I apologize. But I believe our range is 80 to 88%, and we are in the 85% range currently.
Okay, so then what you're saying is that we will meet that criteria by the end of the school year? But just, we're not there?
Correct, and that's why we give that explanation of there is carryover money that is not budgeted towards these accounts. That's for the schools to do what they please with, and they usually do not budget for salaries, cuz that comes out of our funding.
So if, per se, a school site needs an additional teacher, you know, because, I don't know, maybe they have an influx of students who just came in from some other country. We still will be able to meet those requirements within that 88%?
Yes.
Or is that not budgeted?
It is. We budget for vacancies and things of that that we anticipate. So we already have that in the budget set aside, so they would fall into that expense category.
And when we, per se, don't need that person any longer, is that still kept in that?
That is a decision that is brought up by Cabinet of whether we're keeping that position or abolishing or maintaining it as a vacancy for the future.
Thank you.
Student board member?
Thank you, President Cretchfield. Mr., sorry.
George is fine.
Mr. George.
George is fine.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but our current total revenues, the $124,901,000?
That's what we received through January 31st.
Okay. And our, in terms of our reserves, so the projected number is around $95 million?
At, as of January 31st, yes.
Do, what is the actual amount right now?
The current amount right now is a little more than 95 because we've received $124 and only spent $105. So you would take that difference plus whatever we had at the end of last year, which was about 130. So we're at about 145-ish, 150.
Okay, and so, how, what percentage of our reserves right now is, makes up our total revenue? Like, what percent?
As a whole, our reserves, as, are you comparing it to how much revenue we get or how much expenditures we spend?
Our total revenue right now.
So our total revenue, it is a little under 50%.
Are, in our reserves?
In our reserves. What we have, that total 95, 100, what we're ending at, if we end at 95, we receive about 200. So it's a little under 50% reserve.
Okay. Of, of those reserves, how much do we have committed and assigned?
At board adoption, we had committed 70%. If you look at it and compare just the second interim where we didn't assign anything, it is much less, it is 22%. But the number I would give you is the 70% because that is what we, what the board and you guys guided us on for July 1st. 69.16% total out of that $95 million.
So... Sorry, correct me if I'm wrong. If we factor, like, let's say subtract the, what we have committed and then assigned from our total reserves right now, what, what percentage of that is from the?
At the time of board adoption, you had 6%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Armstrong?
You guys, actually, Amy asked questions that I wanted to ask. And of course, you guys are exploring what we may have to do is, as far as staffing and programs and what areas we may have to adjust, if we, if you guys project that we will go into a problem. Am I correct? So, yeah. So that's it. Great questions, you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Student board member?
Thank you, President Cretchfield. Mr. George, in the, the special funds, ending fund balance, what are those special funds? Where do they come from?
Special funds, we consider any fund that is not our main funding source, which is our general fund. So for example, Fund 8 is our ASP fund. We have to track that now and report that to the, to the state. Fund 11 is our adult education. Fund 12 is child development, so it's our ECE kids. 13 is nutrition. That's where we get all the school food and all that, so that's separate from ours. Fund 21 is our bond fund, which we kind of discussed, which is what was used for the steam building, all those other projects. But these are all the funds we have that are outside of our main funding source.
I see. So on Fund 10 for special, special education pass-through, does that mean the district only, in terms of special funds, only has $91 for special education?
Specific fund only one, only has $91. That one is very unique. It is our SOPA fund. So we use that as a pass-through fund. The money comes in, and then we distribute it out to the members of that SOPA, which include Paramount, Linwood, and ourselves.
And is there a reason for it only being 91? Cuz I...
That's just the interest that remained at the end of last year, from, from the earnings on the funding that was there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome questions tonight. Ms. Garza?
Thank you, President Cretchfield. My first question, I have two more, I'm sorry, it just came up right now. The delayed facilities repairs. Are we, I think that we haven't had an update lately, but I'm hoping that we will in the future. Are we still... Is this the current amount that we have for such repairs? Like, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, what exactly do we use this amount for?
That money is set aside for those delayed facility repairs. So that's, that $25 million is set aside for when those repairs start.
So are they, can you walk me through the process? How does someone or a school submit a request for these funds?
That I will defer to Sulema, because it goes along with the plan.
Yes, so those delayed facility repairs, if you recall during the facilities presentation, that was one of the areas that we looked at in moving forward with those projects, the Mayfair Fields, the Thomas Jefferson parking lot, as well as the bus transportation expansion. So that's where the funding for that would come. In terms of just general things that our sites need in daily repairs, that's our deferred maintenance account that we have to set aside at least 3% on that. And that goes through a work order system, where the sites would put in the needs of repairs throughout the district. And our maintenance department has a budget itself for deferred maintenance repairs.
And so if, now that we've been having these last two years record rains, I've been at just one or two sites. But I, I'm seeing that it's necessary for us to look at our roofs on many of our facilities because they're very old and they're having leaks in the classrooms. So is this where, and please point me in the right direction, I wanna understand, would we take that money out of delayed facility repairs if we needed to make a fix this school year? Or would it be from the deferred maintenance?
It, it could be a combination of both, depending on the budgeted amount that would be needed. So for our deferred maintenance, we at least have to budget 3%. So if that cost of the 3% would be able to support all of that, because maybe we don't have other repairs that may be needed, and it could be a large chunk amount, a large chunk of money that could be used from the deferred, then we would do that. Your ending fund balance, your reserves, and your committed funds, think of that as your rainy day fund. Those are for things above and beyond, and should always be used for one-time expenditures. In that case, that might be a one-time expenditure, Ms. Garza, for a time being, right? But however, if the deferred maintenance could cover it, you would use it there and then dip into your reserves if needed.
So it goes first through deferred maintenance and then it would go to reserves?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. So you said 3%. Can you tell me roughly around how much money that is?
And that's just a minimum. It's actually a minimum, and right now, currently, we have budgeted...
Roughly, we have set aside for maintenance this year about $6.5 million.
So 6.5 million?
It will always be 3% of whatever your budgeted expenditures are.
Okay.
So in this case, it'll be 3% of about $245.
All right, thank you. And believe me, I, I understand these are big buildings, and it's probably gonna cost a lot to repair a roof.
And that's why, sorry to interrupt, but that's why it's important to also have some funds in your rainy day to come and step in if ever needed in those situations.
Perfect. My, may I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. My second question pertains to the educator effectiveness FY 2021, 22 fund. Is this money already allocated? Or are we thinking of using this by the end of the school year? Or can I ask, what are your thoughts, Ms. Carter?
Sorry, the, the funds have already been allocated, and I believe we brought forward that plan. It has different things that are in it currently. We brought it forward in November for you guys to look at. And so we were looking at such things as UDL training, English learner training, things like that in the plan.
Are any of these going to be training that the teachers will be receiving in the summer? Or is that completely different?
It could be, that teachers could be receiving it. We have multiple funds that we do professional development out of. So pinning it down to one or the other is, you know, you could be using Title II funding, educator effectiveness, funding for professional development. But this is a fund that we would take those series out of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. I do have one more question. And I know this is probably, sounds easy, but it's probably really not. But when it comes to our facility repairs with our aging buildings, is it, how would... But when it comes to our facility repairs with our aging buildings, is it, how would you go about getting, by site, I'm, I'm sure some sites have more repairs and more maintenance than others. Would it be possible to get a breakdown of where this, where the delayed facility repairs and, well basically, which sites are costing the most to upkeep?
So I do believe that was part of the plan, but Sulema could speak more to that. That was part of that original plan where they did the assessment and said, this is what we see here. A more current one, I believe Sulema could speak to about.
Right, I know that's part that, we did that, the maintenance, the master facilities.
The facilities master plan.
We're still going by all that and are we just doing the, the priority one right now, or are we?
We've identified some of the priority ones, yes. And we're continuing to walk the sites and see different areas of priority which will lead into some of the summer plans that are needed to be done. But if you recall, that is master plan, and don't quote me on the exact number, but it was close to a hundred and thirty-five million in terms of just facility repairs, which we know that twenty-five million does not even take, you know, a portion of that, there is a lot there. But then additionally, some of the decisions of moving forward with some projects, like the fields, the bus drop-off zone at Thomas Jefferson and so forth, would eat into that. So that's where you look at your deferred maintenance and say, how can we map this out with the years to come based on where we know where we're at and what are those priorities?
Bus drop-off zone?
At Thomas Jefferson. That was the whole parking lot and the drop-off at Thomas Jefferson.
Is, is that going forward?
Yes. That was something that when we presented to the board, it was the Mayfair Fields and the Thomas Jefferson parking lot bus transportation drop-off.
Right, there's the three projects on there.
Right, the third one was the transportation, the expansion of the transportation. But that one was not.
But they are, the repairs and maintenance, they're coded by site, like you could get that?
Yes, our work order system does have them, they're submitted by the sites.
And I know we were working previously to revamp the work order, I think it was, what's it called, Work Dude, the, the app? Was that going forward, or are we using something else?
We're still using the current app that we use, our maintenance tracker, that's what we currently use for all of our work order systems. However, are looking to something that's more updated versus what we currently have.
Okay, cool. Ms. Garza?
Thank you. I know I said I didn't have any more questions, but you asked something that kind of prompted another. So at Thomas Jefferson, this is something that we had requested to place on the facility plan. Is that still a necessary action that we need to take at this point? Be, you know, thinking of declining enrollment in our schools? Is that drop-off still necessary at Thomas Jefferson?
Well, what happens when the board gives direction to go ahead and move forward, then we go out to bid for these items. When the bid comes back in, then we bring that to the board. If at that time, the board says, no, we don't want to move forward with this because it is not now within what we need to, then the board at that time can make the decision not to. However, even right now, if the board was to say, well, since we haven't got anything, let's put a hold, that's something that we can also consider at this point in regards to those decisions.
And can you remind me why that decision was to be made, like, to have that drop-off there?
So that was a safety situation. Currently, there being, the bus parks in the middle of the street to load and unload students. So it was to make a drop-off zone actually on the school campus and to be able to exit away and to help with the traffic flow. That is one of our schools that we have the most trans, students who are transported via bus, and so to make it a safer situation for them being dropped off.
So it's more of a safety concern, not necessarily?
I apologize, Ms. Garza, I'm gonna have to cut off this, this conversation because it's getting into a topic not related to the, the budget itself.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Speaking of the facilities plan, we had that five-year plan about a year ago, correct? So are we in year one or year two of that five-year plan?
It was in October of, we're in year two. October, let me double check on that date. Twenty-two is what I believe that the first presentation was given on that.
So when we had that presentation, we all discussed that we were trying to figure out what the priorities were. We talked about what, safety, what, we talked as a board about what the priorities were. So how are we moving forward when we never talked about what the priorities were? How, who decided what the priorities were and what we're spending the money on?
So there's been multiple presentations on facilities. The first one started with the facilities master plan where we had an outside vendor come and evaluate all of our facilities.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yes, so that was the first. Then from there, we provided the board with different facility updates information. And one of them being the one that included the Mayfair Fields, the tran, the drop-off, as well as the transportation expansion.
So we took all of those and that was our first-year plan? Basically, we decided to make those the priority for that first-year plan?
Well, those were not identified as a year, the, step, step-one priorities. Those were identified in different, but those were identified as projects that the board wanted to move forward with.
So we did those instead of, we just bypassed that first-year plan and did those instead? Is that what we're saying?
When you're looking at the plan, the, those were recommendations?
Correct.
That are being made, so some of those have been identified through deferred maintenance because some of them are like repair of ceiling tiles or concrete areas. It's not large projects. So there's two different things. There is those upkeep, daily maintenance repairs that are needed, but then there's large one-time projects. So the large one-time projects is where we're talking about the ending fund balance. Some of those priorities identified in the master plan, that's what we're talking about with the deferred maintenance budget that we currently have.
Okay, I guess I'm just, we talked about these plans, we talked about that we wanted to, you know, have some input and I kind of agree with you. I don't think we've had any input on that five-year plan since the first year, so I don't know, I'm confused.
So if I, I do believe like that, the five-year plan, we, there was the identifying the step-one priorities, which are just all about safety. I believe we gave direction that, that that should be addressed first. And then we did have a few projects that we threw in there, but I think maybe when we talk over that macro calendar, maybe bringing that back to the board and talking more about that would be good. I do want to wrap this up soon, but student board member?
Thank you, President Crichfield. Ms. Hoogin or Mister George? When the twenty-four million was set aside to, like, to finish those three committed projects, how did that process go? Were, were, was that twenty-four mil, did that come out of the general fund or the district's reserves?
That, that is out of the district reserves and it's important to remember that that money is set aside for delayed facility repairs. These were options that are presented in the sense that you have this money there and you can use it to complete those projects. Should the priority change in regards to the board, that's a board decision on it. But in using those funds, those would be funds that would be for those projects.
So those came out of the reserve?
Of the reserves, correct.
Thank you. With that being said, just to go off of what my board colleagues went, talked about in terms of facilities at schools. Some of our schools are incredibly old. Bellflower is going on its seventy-fifth year soon. And, you know, it isn't just roofs, it isn't just, a lot of repairs need to be made, not just to Bellflower, but to a lot of our school sites. And I think, given that, it's always well to play cautious in terms of money. I know I'm young, but I, I mean, even I know that. I think I would like to urge either our cabinet members or possibly our board to look at, I don't know, alternative funding sources. Because a lot of these buildings need, well, like, I believe it's Mister George or Ms. Hoogin, that these buildings need over one hundred thirty-five million dollars in just repairs. But looking at, you know, I think in the multi-year projection or like based on twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we are declining in enrollment and that plays a factor in how much funding we get from LCFF and all of those things. But if we were to make our district more marketable, in the sense that, you know, maybe we have more updated facilities than neighboring school districts. Whether it's through a bond or some other large-scale monetary projects that would need to happen within the next few years. I think that would, I think that would benefit our school district the most. So I, I really urge us to look into those alternative sources and, you know, play safe with our money, but also, I've never been to Las Vegas, we are not in Vegas, but, you know.
It's a very good recommendation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Time for one more, Ms. Stewart?
Thank you. Seeing that we didn't have this ahead of time, that's probably why there's so many questions. But I just wanted to say thank you because I agree with you. Looking at our SARC reports and looking at our interiors and things that need to be replaced, it would have been nice to have maybe like a list of things that we wanted to see done right away because of safety concerns and things like that. So I hope that we have those discussions in the future and that you can join us. Thank you.
Mister George, thank you for the presentation and the information, very helpful, really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the board will now take a brief five-minute recess before we go into major action. The board is now re-adjourned at seven forty-eight and we're on to major action. Our first major action item of this evening is the selection of members to the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly for two thousand twenty-four.
I would like to make a motion that the Board of Education cast its ballot for Dr. Alma Karina Castro, Jaime Lopez, Esther Mejia, Alicia Magnano, Anne Phillips, Linda Solomon Saldana, as our representatives to the CSBA Delegate Assembly two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Roll call, please.
Student Board Member Dizon?
I'll abstain.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mister Crichfield?
Aye. Motion passes. Our last major action item of the evening is the request for board travel and conference. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I don't really have a problem with this, but I do want to, in the future, talk about our policies and maybe some type of report back, maybe what we learned, maybe what could benefit our students in our district. And so I know we're looking at our universal policies in April and maybe the board policy three-three-five-oh is something that we can look at. And maybe just a form or something so we can all take advantage of each other going to different places. I know after CSBA, we put all the drop folders and all the presentations in a file for everyone. So I just think something that we can all just benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong?
Thank you for that, Amy, because it, it is very important that when we do go out, that we do come back and share. I usually pass information like to, to the staff, like, oh, look, look at this, just go check it out. But I did, I, it, there's some, some, some conferences that I kind of thought would be nice for me to get for, for the board. And on our own, I can actually share some of them and you could probably say, well, we need to go, go look at this and go look at that. And I can definitely bring it back because it's just like with the teachers, the California Teachers Association, you know, I'm, I'm always going. So, a, and it's so different when you go and see what the nation is doing. And it's the same way with California and the National School Board. So I appreciate that and I would love to come back and share it because you could probably like, hey, push it to, to look into some of these things. And I have, I, I, I mean, I, I can go on and on. I, I came back one time wanting to do thematic classes, classrooms, you know, like to where the students could rotate, not so much as, you know, the, the, the teachers, you know, but the, to have different classrooms for like early learners. They have so much stuff out there. So we'll get together later and I have it right here for you, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Ms. Garza?
Yes, can I request, President Crichfield, that our staff places a folder for our upcoming colleagues' meeting? So that way if she's got it, gathering any slides, you can just easily move them into that folder where we can all just have access to it.
It's a good idea. Is that clear?
Yeah, you'd like a folder created where you can share information once you attend a conference and we can just attach that folder to your daily memo that week that they come back possibly?
That would be perfect. That way, we all know it exists there, maybe we label it with the year and the title. We all, whoever does go does, or, you know, can go ahead and drop them in there and then anyone can view it.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Student Board Member Dizon?
Thank you, President Crichfield. And just with the topic of going to conferences, hopefully in the future, since Elisa, my school said we're already in the process of hopefully getting future student board members, I think we just want more information maybe at the beginning of our term. The conferences that we can go to, because I remember Chris mentioning to me that he went to a few conferences before, but I never really fully received information about that. So I think moving forward for future board members, I think that would be really great for them to be aware of that process.
Great suggestion. I like it. Ms. Stewart?
So I'm wondering, President Crichfield, if maybe we can, I know Elaine sent out the list of conferences, the ones that were coming up, which was pretty amazing. If maybe we can't just get a list of all the conferences, if we know they're pretty much the same time of the year or just in the future so that we can all have the opportunity to go.
I don't, I don't know how they do the scheduling on them, but is that something that you'd see as?
They're emailed at different times, so we don't get them ahead of time during the year, but definitely as they come in, we can.
But they're usually annual, right? Like, most of them are annual?
Yeah, some of them are, but then, you know, they'll send the email just right before it's time to register, but I can let you guys know as soon as I get those emails.
What we'll do is we'll make sure that every conference that comes in that we're aware of, we share it with all of you. Perfect. I was just gonna ask that, because just like you did, like, I learned of one that I didn't know about, so I think it would be great to learn of others that we might be able to go to, especially if they're local.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Any other questions?
I, I would be, one comment, I, I do think that it's a policy that we need to look at. I know we're going over the global policy adoption. But I think it's just very important for us as board members to be fiscally responsible with our, with our spending and our, our, our travel. And I think it's very important for our ongoing development and going to these, and some of them are really good. But I, I agree with Ms. Stewart, we should share that information. I think a central repository for, for information would be great, like Ms. Garza mentioned. But I think we do need to look at making sure that we're equitable with our travel and, and our, our spending on the board. That being said, is there a motion to, for the, to approve the request for board travel and conference?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Student Board Member Dizon?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mister Crichfield?
Aye. Thank you. And do we have any items to withhold from consent agenda this evening?
President Crichfield, I would like to hold one three point one-nine second interim financial statements.
Any others? Board colleagues? Going once, going twice, alright. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and withhold items one point three point one-nine second interim statements?
Have that motion.
Motion by Ms. Armstrong?
Second.
Second by Ms. Garza. Roll call, please.
Student Board Member Dizon?
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mister Crichfield?
Aye. Moving on to the first item withheld, one point three point one-nine second interim report. Does the board have any questions or comments? Ms. Stewart, since you pulled the item, do you have any comments you want to say before we go to approve or not?
Again, I understand that the presentation was on our agenda on the district website, but what we get from you guys is supposed to be what's happening up here on the dais. So this interim, I've said many times, it's like a hundred and, I don't know, a million pages. And so your summary is really, it's great and it's important and I can pose my questions off of that summary. Tonight, getting that on the dais, I cannot come up with those questions right off the top of my head that I could have prepared for. So in that reason, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Anybody else? Anybody else?
I will say I appreciate the presentation. It was by Mr. George tonight. Very good. I do agree with my colleague, Ms. Stewart. Obviously, we try to get these things handled before. I understand things happen. But yeah, they're very important and I think the presentation was great and I feel all my questions were answered tonight and I will work on things going forward. Do I have a motion to approve item 1.3.19?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Student Board Member Disan.
Aye.
Dr. Alhessen.
Aye.
Ms. Armstrong.
Aye.
Mrs. Garza.
Aye.
Ms. Stewart.
Abstain.
Mr. Critfield.
Aye. Moving on to board communications, we will start with Ms. Armstrong.
All right, happy Women's Month for March, okay, to all our beautiful women out here, beautiful, strong women. Men recognize us, okay? So anyway, I left my calendar. However, I just want to say on the 25th of February, I had a loss in our family and it's really kind of turned me upside down, everybody, but it was expected. And so my world's been kind of torn upside down since February 25th, but I'm okay and the family is okay. However, another thing is at Mayfair High, the Abilities Conference and that parent spoke, Michelle Young. Michelle said that she was approached by so many people and I was like, gosh, I wish I hadn't been there. But, you know, she had her speech wrote out, written out, but she also wrote a poem. And I know three of us went. Am I correct? And I've been knowing her and her children, oh my goodness, since they were in elementary school. So I don't know, did a lot of you guys go to the abilities thing? So you guys heard her poem? Okay, I really wanted to read it again, but I'll spare you unless you guys want to hear it. You would like to hear it? They said it was, she could barely walk out and trust me. At church, we go to church together and we, as a family, really helped her and her children as they went up, real struggle with special education and getting what the kids need. So this is Jericho's Poem by Michelle Young Garcia. "My name is Jericho and I have special needs. Don't confuse that with stupidity. You might not understand the words I say, but we can communicate in a different way. I may be a little different, but I am beautifully and wonderfully made. I survived this life because of the lessons my mom gave. I must tell you that I am never alone. I have my friends here and my family at home. My teachers support me and help me on my way to be academically strong and grow smarter every day. I thank you all for helping me to become who I am and I am happy. When you ask a question and I just smile, remember to be patient. I will answer in a little while. Yay, I may be a little different, but I'm a lot like you. I play video games, listen to music and watch movies too." The end. But anyway, I hope you guys enjoyed that. And it's great seeing the successes. He's come a long way and it was Bellflower teachers to thank. And we have really a lot of success stories, but we know we still have a lot of work to do to get our Special Education Department to be the very, very best. So thank you, Bellflower teachers, and we're mostly women. For me. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. And moving on to Dr. Alhessen.
Thank you. I also attended the Abilities Assembly and I got to meet Jonathan, who was sitting next to me. And he's nonverbal, but he was very engaging. And when I turned my back to speak to someone, he quickly grabbed my scooter chair and turned me around. And with that, I smiled at him and he gave me direct eye contact and I knew that he was happy that I was sitting next to him. So I enjoyed it very much and I'm glad that they're changing their name. I think it's called Unified now and I think that's a great idea and the students came up with that themselves. So what gave me the pride and the distinction is that the students are working on inclusion. So that's a great step. I also went to Read Across America. I was there at Washington Elementary and I read for special ed class and I also read for general ed third grade class. And it was both really rewarding. I enjoyed both of them. And this teacher for the special ed class was, the students were great, they were well attentive. And also was a general ed class, they were also well attentive. One of the questions that I got from one of the students, because I read the Dr. Seuss book, and so the question was if I was married to Dr. Seuss, because I introduced myself as Dr. Seuss. So that was, everyone started laughing at that, but it was a genuine question, which I was amused by. So it was a great, great process. I want to share specifically some recent CSBA news that impacts our district. And most importantly, the recent one with the AI-generated nudes, nudes, excuse me, at Beverly Hills Middle School. And the reason I bring this up is that I'd like for us to be proactive in avoiding some of these issues that other districts are already facing. What can we do to make our students safe? Because apparently, once A-generated nudes are put out, they can never be deleted, like they're there forever in the system. And it's devastating for students and it affects their image, their self-esteem. And I really think that's something we need to be on top of. Most importantly, the superintendent of that school said that in a statement, although no information was disclosed about the nature of the action, the number of students involved or their grade level, he called on Congress to prioritize the safety of children in the U.S., adding that technology, including AI and social media, can be used incredibly positively, but much like cars or cigarettes at first, if unregulated, they're utterly destructive. So I wanted to share that. The other one was a positive note in regards to a recent bill, Assembly Bill passed, 1796, by Assembly Member Juan Alanis of Modesto. And it was basically stating that now parents have to be informed about career technical education and do enrollment courses for their students on their campuses. And I think that's great because when we educate our parents and the students are aware of it, it's going to create more of the dual enrollment process. And lastly, I found it was very interesting and I know it'll probably get a lot of heat about this, but basically, some schools are looking at banning cell phones. And many teachers, I know I've talked to, would love that to happen in the classroom. And there's been incredibly harmful actions taken by students just to get likes on their social media, whether it's on Instagram or Facebook. So I think that's really important for us to look at a new board policy about cellphone use, although we have one, but there's no consequences for it being used and then all of a sudden it's harmed or actually, I think it totally relates, and this is speaking only my half, not for the rest of the board, to our academic performance gaps. When a student's on the phone, there's no way that they are understanding what the teacher's saying, engage with other students, and this not only hurts their future, but it hurts our society as a whole. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Alhessen. Ms. Garza.
Thank you, President Critfield. I attended February 15th, the Hall of Fame banquet along with my colleagues Stewart and our President Critfield and our new superintendent, interim superintendent, Ms. Acevedo. I actually double booked myself that night, so sorry, but I did attend. I did. And what I saw was amazing. It was a lineup of all our best athletes and our students who worked so hard every day to maintain their GPAs academically and also be able to go after school and, you know, dedicate themselves to these teams, this working together and making sure that they can be a well-rounded student so that way they can reach those goals that they have for reaching university or even for community colleges. But I also attended the February 29 Harem Chick Peterson basketball game and that was a lot of fun. First time I had ever been and I think I was missing so much from not attending before, so you will see me there. I'd love to attend Bellflower High Schools as well. But let me throw something out there to you, just a suggestion. I know that you gather this money at the entrance for scholarships for our kids and that's amazing that you guys do that. But would it be possible, maybe if we could, maybe with our connections, board members, maybe invite some of our friends over to these games in the future and sell maybe dinner and sideline seat, you know, for a certain amount? Just throwing it out there, you know, giving some ideas, hopefully. And then maybe we can get a little bit more for our students, right, on both campuses? So just a thought. I'll let it simmer. And then March 7th, I was able to attend also the PTA Reflections Meeting and Award Ceremony and that was also, I try to attend every year. And I'm so, so amazed that the caliber of our students and their creativity and how we offer, you know, all these different mediums for them to express themselves and be so communicative with their words, with their, you know, interpretations, their music. So I really love that. Thank you so much for inviting me. Always enjoy it. And then I'm also going to make a really quick, like, throw ask out there for our community. We have an amazing district. We do. I look around and no one else offers as many pathways for CTE as we do. We have a new one, Ms. Acevedo. Can you tell me the, I don't want to butcher the name, so can you remind me what it is?
Are you talking about our urban farming or are you talking about retail marketing? They're both fairly new.
The one we saw at the STEAM building, but we also have that other one, please. And I was so, I'm sorry, I'm going to let you say the name.
The urban farming over at Bellflower or retail marketing at Mayfair?
Yes.
You've visited recently.
Yes, last night. So that's coming in there. I know we have the aviation, that's also new. The urban farming, I think at the beginning of the school years when we started it. But I was so upset, I was, I even called my, our board president, I'm like, what's going on? I just saw the LAUSD Superintendent and he's like showboating his, you know, nutrition. Like, we have such an amazing program. Let's, can you help us, please? Like, we're going to do it, but if at all possible, help us just tell your friends, your family, your neighbors, because there's really no better way to promote our programs in our district than word of mouth. It really is. It really helps a lot. And that's what I'm going to say. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
No, you can keep going. If you're going to promote, just keep going. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Vice President.
Thank you, President Critfield. Good evening. The last few weeks, I attended a lot of fabulous events. On February 23rd, I attended the Mayfair Abilities Awareness Assembly with President Critfield. Thank you again to our Unified Program for everything that you do for our kids. The assembly was so great to bring awareness to all of our students, especially our general ed students, to continue to create an atmosphere where all of our students understand more about the day in a life of someone with a disability. The parent that spoke about her son was truly inspiring and I thank her for sharing her story. On February 26th, Board President Critfield and I, Clerk Garza, we attended the Lakewood Youth Sports of Hall of Fame with Mrs. Acevedo. Congrats to all of our Mayfair athletes. I wrote, I believe there were 19 award winners, but Lennox reminded me that there were 19 award winners. And so congrats to Mayfair sophomore Chaz Gilbreth on Athlete of the Year. It's really exciting that he's so young and I just cannot wait for football season at both Mayfair and Bellflower next year. On February 28th and March 5th, I met with President Critfield and Mrs. Acevedo. On March 1st, I attended the Read Across America event at Washington Elementary. I am thankful that I was able to read to a TK Special Ed class as well as one of our kindergarten classes. I really love being at this school, seeing parents there reading. I saw one of my friends, Jody Errett, she was there supporting their PTA. So their parents were coming to read, their PTA members were coming to read. So it's just awesome to be able to talk to them and to listen to their experiences and there were so many positive stories. One parent talked to me about moving from Paramount to Bellflower and just how positive it has been for his children. So that was really nice to hear. And again, thank you to Ms. Arroyo and Mrs. Rios for hosting me. On March 5th, I attended another Read Across America event at Lindstrom Elementary. President Critfield and I visited Dr. Robinson's TK class and we read a story together, which was pretty comical and a lot of fun. I watched Counselor Kimberly Bond do a lesson in the Wellness Center with our third graders that included yoga and morning meditation and it was so awesome. The kids were so great. Again, I just praises to our elementary teachers. I don't know how they get those kids to be still, but it's amazing. The kids did really well and I was joking that maybe all of our teachers need to do this too because I felt like I wanted to lay down and do it with them. I read for Mrs. Nishimuros and Ms. Cummins' class, which was great. And I want to thank Intern Principal Dr. Tirani for allowing us to come in and taking that position and supporting our district. That is not an easy transition going from Bellflower High School to Lindstrom and I think he's doing a great job, so I want to thank him again for just making a difference in our students' lives. And then later that day, I attended the PTA Reflections Award Ceremony, another event that really makes me happy. Seeing the kids accept their awards is always amazing. Seeing the kids that came back that we saw last year and actually being able to talk to them again and making those connections. All three of us, we went and we were able to congratulate each student, hand out certificates and medals and talk with the parents. And thank you to so many principals that showed up to support their students. That was really nice to see. There was an overwhelming amount of principals that we did not see the year before, so thank you so much. And again, please join PTA. They do so much for our students and families. And then just lastly, last night I was supposed to attend the fair at Mayfair High School, so I'm so sorry I could not attend, but my middle school team, our boys' basketball team, was playing the championship game. And at some point, I have to be loyal to my district as well because I do so much here. But they won, so shout out to my boys for winning. And so I just, I want to apologize for not being able to attend because I did say I would attend and I didn't realize the game was going to go so long and it was so intense. So thank you so much. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Student Board Member Disan.
Thank you, President Critfield. It's a lot to remember these last few weeks. But two weeks ago, I would like to say thank you to our wonderful CSF and Apex Organizations. They're kind of like student leadership and college organizations that we have at Bellflower. We were able to go on a really amazing trip to the UCI campus and we met a really great human biology professor there and she showed us her classroom, told us about how to become a TA, be involved in research, how some of her students are paid to be doing research under the teachers. And I think it was a really good experience for a lot of our kids. And I think one of my regrets is not being able to go on enough campus tours. I mean, COVID happened, but I think it's really great that in these next coming years, our students will be able to go on even more trips like that. Last week, I injured my foot, but I still tried to go to school for our Renaissance Rally because I believe it's our last one, or at least one of our last ones for the school year and I'm a senior. I was given the title valedictorian, but I would like to give a lot of special attention to my counselors and my teachers. I don't know if they're watching. But my college and current counselor, Ms. Campos, thank you so much. She was given our Spinata Award, which is kind of a play on our former ASB directors' names. But I don't know if it was like Person of the Year, but something along those lines. She's been. She's been an incredible help to me in like my college application process. I would not have submitted any of my applications on time if it weren't for her, and also for help on financial aid, because that's been a very complicated process. So thank you to Ms. Campos, and also today, I was just kind of reminded a lot of how much my teachers have helped me throughout all of my life. I'm not originally from the United States, and when I came here, I received so much help from my elementary teachers, and even now, my high school teachers kind of noticed I was really stressed today, and some of them, you know, checked up on me and gave me an extension for homework assignment, because they knew I would be here tonight, so thank you, you know who you are. And also for my, one of my former elementary teachers who would like to come to my graduation, thank you. I'm really excited to see you again. And going back to like elementary, my aunt from the Philippines is coming for my graduation in a few months, and I haven't been able to see any of my family in almost eight years, so I'm really happy that I get to see them again. And I'm looking forward to things after senior year. I promise, I'm still trying to do my homework, but I think that's all for me. So thank you to my teachers, and thank you to my family.
Thank you, Student Board Member Dezon. So for me, I want to start by saying, Happy Women's History Month. I grew up with all brothers, and now I live with all girls, and I get to sit up here and serve with very strong and intelligent women, and I feel very lucky to do so, even off to the right, I mean, you know, I'm glad Andrew's here too, I guess, but, but Happy Women's History Month. I want to start by saying, congratulations, there was an election this past week to Jeff Wood for being reelected, Lakewood City Council, and also, what's his name, David Ariano, to be, he's a council member-elect for Lakewood City Council, and also Jose Salache for winning his primary for State Assembly. Very proud of those three people. And proud of the entire community for what they did over this campaign, very respectful, and it was a very, it was exemplary for what democracy should look like in our, in our local elections. It was very respectful, very well done. Went to a bunch, I mean, my colleagues mentioned a lot of the events already. One I'll point out is the Hall of Fame, that was amazing. I mean, Mayfair just, man, we had so many athletes there, and Chaz, I think, Chaz Gilbreth, I think he's a sophomore right now. So I mean, just a very special young man in the wrestling team over at Mayfair, just doing amazing things, so they were, they were acknowledged as well. Great stuff, Read Across America, went to Thomas Jefferson, Los Flores, and then Lindstrom. I got the read to my, my daughter's classroom, which is really cool, because she was super excited. She kind of looked at me like I was cool, which is like, never happened before, so that was a good moment. And then I got the read with Ms. Stewart, and we had a lot of fun with that. PTA Reflections, awesome event. The fair, got to see some really amazing programs coming up, and the ones we already have, but the marketing, I'm just blown away, and there's so much potential there, I love it. Had a meeting with PTA President Carrie McDaniel, and I'm happy that we're doing those, and, are you yawning? Is it, it's already too long? I'm happy that we're doing those. LBCC State of the College, went to that event, great event. The Smash Brothers Tournament at Mayfair High, so the esports program in our STEAM building over at Mayfair. I'm so excited about esports, for, I'm just like, I'm nerding out, I love it. I love what the WIZ is doing over there, the program, what it means for our students, especially our students with disabilities. My daughter actually competed, and just, she's already practicing for the next one, I think it's March 16th. I'm pretty sure, I'll be there, she's practicing probably right now. The Mayfair Abilities Awareness Assembly, thank you for reading that. Beautiful poem, and just seeing those students, for me, knowing that my daughter's going to be going to Mayfair eventually, it's always, I didn't, I didn't cry like I did last year, but it was, it was pretty close. I absolutely love it and the work that's being done over there. What else? Oh, yeah. I do have one statement I'd like to read on behalf of the board. I do want to make the public aware that we did receive the FICMAT Special Education Audit, which stands for Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team. We thank the FICMAT team and our Special Education staff for the time and efforts to evaluate our Special Education Department and to give us recommendations for enhancements to the services that we provide our students. The report will be available to the public on the FICMAT website tomorrow. District administration is developing plans and will be put in place to address and address the recommended areas. As a board, these audits allow us to take action based on these recommendations. In summary, there were areas that were met, along with 26 recommendations. We are determined to enhance our special education service and appreciate the work from the FICMAT team, and especially the work from our BUSD staff. Special education, it's no secret that there's a lot of work to be done, but this board is going to do the work, and staff is, we're all going to do it together. It's going to be something that gets all of our focus, and this audit was very important. I've been waiting patiently for it, and I know we already have a plan, and I'm really excited about that, so thank you. That being said, we will now move on to informational items. Does the board have any questions regarding the informational items this evening? No? Alright, at this time, the, oh, no. Wrong spot. If there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned at 8:24 PM until the regularly scheduled board meeting will be held Thursday, March 21st, 2024. Thank you, guys, have a great night.